This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our July Board of Selectmen meeting. It's been about three months since myself and Mr. Piper and Ms. Buemi have been together here, but I'd like to welcome Sally Buemi, our third selectwoman, and Mr. Bill Piper, our second selectman here. I know we're presenting to each and every one of you a different image tonight, but in the spirit of continuing to understand that we still are in this pandemic, please, please allow us the ability to present to you tonight wearing these masks. Thank you very much for joining us, and we have a group of North Haven citizens listening in also this evening. So I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I'd like to start by asking all of us here to stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We will move to item number three of tonight's agenda, the approval of the minutes from the Board of Selectmen meeting on June 4th. That was a meeting where I was here, myself, and Bill and Sally dialed into that meeting. So is there a motion to accept those minutes?
Well, before I make the motion to approve the minutes, I would just like to quickly say hello to everybody. We missed seeing all of you, and I just wanted to commend the first selectman for his leadership in us wearing the masks. I think it shows meritorious leadership on your part, setting a good example. I only wish that the same level of leadership perhaps was at the federal level, and maybe we wouldn't have some of the problems that we're having in other parts of the country. So I want to commend you for taking the initiative and leading by example. With that said, I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Selectmen meeting of June 4th, 2020.
Thank you, Sally. Thank you for the motion, and thank you for the comments. And is there a second?
My thanks to Sally too for her nice comment, and I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have one item under item number four, and I wanted to share with everyone, and Bill and Sally also, that about 12 to 14 days ago, I was tied up for a long period of time as we, as a town, prepared to get rerated from a financial status standpoint. And I want to share with you that out of all the years I've been in office, this was the most difficult rating call that I've been through with also our Director of Finance, Ed Swinkowski. And it was difficult. We really had to be on our game, and I had to answer a lot of difficult questions. And you, I hope, would understand that when we deal with rating agencies, these are some of the brightest men and women across the United States. So during the call, two things came up, that are two dark clouds that loom across all municipalities across the country, in addition to Connecticut. And those two looming dark clouds are as follows. One, as many of the states are projecting significant budget deficits all over the country, the rating agencies are looking at it negatively as it relates to rerating the individual municipalities. And the second issue was something that I had not really anticipated, but we did have answers, and the right answers, that across the country, as municipalities are victims of ransomware, and there have been cyber attacks. And this is something Mr. Piper has brought to our attention months ago through articles that he has shared with us. That ransom attack, and some municipalities in Connecticut have experienced this, have crippled municipalities, and the rating agencies look very negatively on that. But I'm happy to report, despite those two dark clouds, the rating agencies are very impressed with the financial acumen of this government. They like the fact that this is a, quote, "strong, consistent leadership", and the finances, and the balancing of budgets, and delivering of surpluses, and most importantly, the significant grand list growth this past year. They liked all that. But for about nine days, we still had to wait for what our rating was, or will be, starting this fiscal year. And I'm happy to say that we have been rerated triple A here in North Haven once again, at the same time when other municipalities are being downgraded. So I wanted to thank all of our fine citizens. I wanted to thank our staff here, our Board of Finance. And I wanted to say that although this was a tremendous challenge in being rerated triple A, we climbed that mountain, and we are in very good shape here as we move into this coming fiscal year. But I want to be very clear about one other thing. Yes, we've been triple A rated. Yes, they look at us as being one of the strongest financially managed governments in the state of Connecticut. But that doesn't mean that we can get complacent. That doesn't mean that we cannot anticipate future stumbling blocks and clouds that may loom and may emerge across the horizon of the Connecticut landscape. So we have to continue to practice the disciplines. And as an example, these past nine days, you know, I've personally been micromanaging the finances of this government every day, every day with our Director of Finance. And I'm happy to report, we not only will balance the fiscal year ending June 30th, we will deliver a surplus. We have given the surplus back in this coming fiscal year. There's approximately a million fifty thousand dollars in surplus monies that are going into giving it back to the residents, and that's the reason, one of the reasons, one of the many reasons why we're able to reduce the middle rate. So with that being said, I wanted to just give everyone an update on that. Thank you for listening. Sally, Bill, thank you.
Okay.
Mike, maybe the, along that note, you know, now that we're, you know, I think today is July 2nd, and we are into a new fiscal year. You know, I received my tax bills today. And I think as we, just as a reminder, I think we all, we approved the extension, or, you know, in terms of at the town level, to actually extend the due date for the, you know, for the July 1st taxes till September 30th. And we also talked about if you can, if you can pay on time, you know, during the month of July, and not use the extension, it would definitely help the cash flow out for the town.
Yes.
So, you know, and, you know, so if you, you know, for people with mortgages, it's going to come from the escrow payment, but for people who no longer have a mortgage, or, you know, your property taxes for your cars, you know, if you could pay, if you can, if you have the ability to pay, it would help the town. If you don't have the ability to pay, I think you can make use of the extension. But, you know, I think it's, it would be in the best interest of everybody, and it would help the, help the town out if people are able to pay. And don't delay it just for the sake of delaying it.
That's very true.
Well, I, you know, happy new fiscal year, a day late. I got my tax bills yesterday.
I got one yesterday, one today, I think. I got the cars today.
I just want to clarify, the due date is still July 1st. The grace period was extended from the normal 30 days to 90 days. That's a very important distinction. So the grace period is extended to give those who are suffering some financial consequences from the pandemic, extra time. But I agree with Bill, well said. If you could afford to pay them in July, it would behoove you to do so because if you, in January, there is no extended grace period. It's the normal one month. So if you wait till that very end, you're just going to have another tax burden in just a few months. So if you can afford to pay them, probably just from a common sense budgetary perspective, it would make sense to do so. But it's good that we remind folks, even though it's mentioned in the literature that came with the tax bills, you know, about the, the extension of the grace period. I think it's, it was wise to bring it up, Bill, to remind folks. Because I'm sure they're riveted to the TV, so happy to see us here. I'm sure there's thousands watching. So it's good that we remind them of that fact.
Yes, I agree, and to just make one other comment on what Bill brought up and what Sally has offered as perspective, that when we start a new fiscal year, ladies and gentlemen, it starts on July 1st. The past is the past. So we still have fixed expenses. And if you're able to pay, to Bill's point and Sally's point, we would appreciate it. Because when you look at our next payroll here on July 10th, we have to have enough cash in to make that payroll to keep the service model sustained. So we did this. We want to be very compassionate here in town. All of us, the three of us, voted for the extension to give people a break. However, if you can't afford to pay, it would help us because we have the fixed expenses of police, fire, sanitation, public works, and even the school system.
Everything, really.
Everything.
Yeah. I mean, the 30-day grace period is built in normally and customarily, and we can handle that if, if, you know, I don't know if you, for those of you who pay, pay your taxes rather than have the escrow, you don't want to come to Town Hall on July, like 27th, 8th, 9th, or 30th, because, you know, there's a lot longer line. But we could withstand that. I mean, the system has been like that for as long as I can remember. So, but you're right, we have to meet our obligations. And so we voted unanimously for the extended grace period because we understand the financial difficulties that certain citizens must be... I'm sorry?
Nothing.
Yeah, I'm sure, we all voted in favor of the grace period extension to give those who really need the help, the necessary help, so.
What Valerie was commenting on, just so everybody knows, is that if you would prefer not to come to Town Hall, please feel free to mail. We have a drop box that we place in between the vestibule. The, this week, it was by appointment. Next week, there are appointments who people have called to pay their taxes. And next week, the town buildings will be open. We have to practice the social distancing. We put spacing on the floors. We will have masks available for those that come in that don't have masks. We have to adhere to state regulations and CDC regulations. So Valerie was just pointing out while Sally was talking that we still, you know, if you're able to pay your taxes, you have the option of mailing them in or coming to Town Hall. If you'd rather not enter the building, there is a drop box in the vestibule between the two sliding doors.
And you could pay online, I think.
And you can pay online also, yes.
Yeah, so with the pandemic, you know, things are better in Connecticut, but as the first selectman accurately said, it's still going on. So you may very well want to take advantage of the mail-in and the, and/or the online.
Right.
So.
All right, but I want to get to item number five, because Sally has put some items up.
Yes, I appreciate, once again, you putting my item on here. I put this clarification of town recycling policy on because whenever I get more than just one or two emails on a different issue, you assume that there's a lot of, a lot of folks might have questions. And I am not a social media person at all. I'm not on Facebook, or Twitter, or anything like that, and I'm happy that I'm not. But I did get some emails asking about recycling. And one email in particular sent me, included as an attachment, quite a long list of comments that were on social media. And so I concluded that there is clearly a significant public confusion out there about recycling. And so I thought it would be a good opportunity, perhaps, Mike, for you to clarify the blue versus the green bin issue and the new recycling trucks. And I also just want to encourage people, and Mike, perhaps you'll agree, that folks should go to the town website, Public Works and Sanitation, and it explains in there what, you know, people are putting TVs out during bulk pickup. They're not going to take the TVs. You got to bring them to the recycling. And, you know, all the information is there. But as far as the recycling in the bins, there seems to be some confusion out there with our folks. Can you clarify that, please?
Yes, and I happen to be very active on social media, so I know exactly what Sally's talking about. In fact, many times I will respond personally at all hours of the night to some of these concerns. So here is the situation, and thank you for bringing it up. So we have three recycling trucks in town. Two have what's called Tippers, T-I-P-P-E-R-S. The Tippers are those trucks that can accept the larger blue cans and then put those blue cans into the trucks on the recycling. Now, what Sally is referring to in the emails she has received and on social media, some people are confused, well, how come they didn't pick up my blue can? It was filled with recyclables. There are times that if one of the two Tipper trucks, which we primarily use, are down, or they're being serviced or maintained, we have a backup truck, a third recycle truck, ladies and gentlemen, and that doesn't have the Tipper capability. So only on that particular route, the green will get picked up, the smaller green receptacle. But our Public Works will always try to identify the blue cans that aren't picked up because the third backup truck is being used on that route. And they will always try to make a note when the Tipper truck's available to go back and pick up the blue can, Sally.
Okay.
That was number one, okay?
Can or bin or whatever.
That's right.
Okay.
So bear with us, with three trucks, sometimes one of the two more sophisticated is down, and we have to use the backup, the old antiquated truck that can't handle the big blue cans.
So folks are buying these larger blue bins on their own, out of Lowe's or a Home Depot?
Yes.
And they have like that bar that the machine, the truck?
It's called a Tipper.
Oh, a Tipper, and two.
Right.
Okay. So, I mean, is the long, is there some, because I know that these Tipper trucks must be the newer ones that we got relatively, I think, last year. Is there some sort of long-term plan to go, you know, rather than this piecemeal, it depends on the truck that's coming by? Is there some long-term plan to go eventually 100% to the larger blue, or?
Yes.
You know?
Yeah, that's another good question. So let me explain that. So we have already priced out the, the larger blue recycle cans, and also priced out for future expansion in our town, purchasing those cans that have the slot where the trucks with the bar can pick up the trash. And we found out that the cost of doing both is $1 million. $1 million to upgrade for the larger blue cans and the more sophisticated trash barrels with the slot where an arm can come from a truck. Now, we'd also, if we went that way with the trash can, we'd then have to invest in the trucks, which are about $750,000 each, to get the truck, Bill and Sally, and our audience, listening and watching, with the arm to pick up that. So it's a significant capital investment. What we're trying to do with MRSA money that we are going to receive is put waivers in or request from the state our ability to buy those, those new sophisticated trucks. And we don't know if that's going to be approved yet. Now, there isn't...
Those, I'm sorry, those are different from the new Tippers that we already have?
Yeah, the, the Tippers are for the recycling.
Recycling, right.
The trash, there's just two issues, larger trash cans and larger recycle bins.
Right, I got you.
So if I can just finish this explanation up. We also looked at buying new blue cans for everybody. But it was interesting that it's a half a million dollars for, to do that with every household in North Haven. So we're contemplating, maybe coming, as we prepare for the next fiscal year in the Budget Workshop session, Sally and Bill, whether we include that as a capital expenditure, at least starting on recyclables, so that all of the residents can have the large blue can as an alternative to having multiple green, smaller bins. I hope that answered that.
But if people are already buying these larger blue ones on their own, which according to what I've been reading they are there doing, will those fit the bill, you know?
You know, I don't know the extent of who's bought what, but, but the bigger blue cans, because the Tippers don't have the arm themselves, the trucks, it's a tipping device that can pick up the larger blue can. So, and look, ladies and gentlemen, if we, let's say we have 500 households that already purchased a blue can. If we can get that approved for next year, those 500 households, we will still buy them a blue can. It wouldn't be fair to do it otherwise. So they would have their own that they bought, and then one from the town. But it would have to be voted on in next year's budget.
So is your best advice to folks right now who are currently, you know, asking all these questions on social media to hold off?
The, well, the questions on social media is why haven't my, why hasn't my blue can been picked up?
Been picked up, right.
I have gotten on social media and explained to thousands of people on one of the North Haven sites exactly what I just explained here this evening. So, and I've got, I actually got, I don't know how many likes on that. Thank you, Mr. Frida, thank you. You know, we didn't realize that, so. But that's what we're, we're going towards. The future is going to be that in trash and recyclable pickup.
Okay.
Okay, I hope that answers it, Sally.
Yes, and I put as a little tail here on this discussion item, the bulk pickup itself. Now, we had the bulk pickup a couple of months late this year because of the pandemic, which I certainly could understand. So we just had it the last couple of weeks in June, rather than in April. How many years has it, I mean, years ago, we had bulk pickup every week, and then we changed it to this semi-annual, two weeks in September, two weeks in April. How long has that, how long ago did we do that?
About six or seven years.
That, boy, the years, I thought it was like three or four, but, you know.
We'd have to go back, I think it's, but I want, if I can remind everybody why, okay? Now, we have another neighboring municipality who just cut out bulk pickup starting this coming fiscal year. We're still doing it twice a year for two weeks. But ladies and gentlemen, what happened back then, which precipitated us having to bring it down to twice a year? There were streets of North Haven that every week, there was a couch and a refrigerator, which led us to conclude that people from neighboring cities and towns were bringing in things because they knew the town was doing it every week because their municipality wasn't doing it. Now, I don't know how it worked out with the residents where we saw every week a couch and a refrigerator, but what had happened was it was costing us, you as taxpayers, more money because there is a significant cost for us to dispose of that type of bulk pickup. And not only including the labor involved, and the fact that our people were tied up, I won't mention the street, every week there was a refrigerator and a hot, and a couch, and then other large bulk items at the same houses every week.
Yeah, well, I, I, I remember that, and I understood that change. But I just, and I do understand that because it had been eight months really since the last bulk pickup, that could explain why in some, I saw plenty of houses with what I call mountains, stuff. Maybe it's people selling their house, maybe, whatever, or doing, you know, a major renovation or whatever. But I just wanted to throw this out there just for food for thought.
Sure.
That, because that must be very trying. And I understand that June was unique because of the two-month extension. But it must be very trying on overtime for the guys, and also physically straining for them with, you know, these two weeks. So my, my, my thought is, you know, changing it to one week quarterly, every, you know, every three months, one week, because maybe then it won't, you won't have these mountains. Just something to think about. Because maybe there'd be less overtime, and it would be less strain on the lumbar of these guys. And, you know, I want to commend these Public Works guys. And you've mentioned it during, back when you were giving your weekly addresses when this pandemic first broke, you gave some great, what I call calming talks to the folks when we were all a little confused and not quite used to what was going on. And you had commended them, and I want to say that as well, because I know they worked very hard. And, you know, it's a difficult job anyway, but with this pandemic and the uncertainty, you know, I really commend the Public Works and Sanitation guys. And it's really my, my concerns for them and the, and the physical, how physically demanding it must be to do this bulk pickup every six months. That perhaps if we went to quarterly, it would still be four weeks, just one week every three months, rather than two weeks every six months, maybe that would help keep what I call the mountain down.
Okay.
Just something to think about.
We will think about that.
No, no, no time limit, and that, that's it. So that's, you can put a check next to number five.
All right, so what I wanted to do for you, Sally and Bill, because Sally raised the point earlier about the information that's on our website. And, you know, still after all these years, there's still some, a little bit of confusion as to what we pick up and what we don't. As an example, we have a two-tire limit, two tires off the rim, and sometimes we see six and eight tires. Porcelain products out of a bathroom. So I have here for Sally and Bill a reference point in case they get any calls. Rather than go down the website, you at least have that as a, as a list of items.
Yeah, I mentioned it with the recycling, and, you know, and you always see TVs, every bulk pickup season, you always see those big TVs out there, and I'm like, those aren't going to get picked up. And it takes them a while to realize that. And sometimes they're near the street, and, you know, they could be interfering with pedestrians. So I think it's great that, to remind folks that it's on the website, and thank you for providing this, yes.
I just will say this as we close this part of the discussion. As an example, unacceptable bulk items, our guys don't pick up. Batteries, we can't pick up batteries, car batteries, or even flashlight batteries. Bathtubs, bricks, concrete, automobile parts, you know, those aren't part of a bulk pickup. But all this is on the website, to Sally's point, ladies and gentlemen. And on the point Sally made about electronics, we have a repository for that, that's the transfer station. So that ties into your point earlier.
Or the recycling center on Elm Street.
Yeah, the recycling center also, yes.
That's a different place.
Right.
You got the, you know, brush and, and, you know, mattresses and box springs can go to Universal.
Correct.
But electronics have to go to...
Recycling on Elm Street.
One thing that I don't see on the unacceptable list that I see out there, maybe I'm not seeing it, is people put out the old rusted propane tanks from their grills. I don't think we can take those either. I think you have to go to places and pay to have them take them for you.
Yes.
So, I mean, that seems pretty obvious that they can't take those.
And I want to, now while we're on this discussion, you just triggered another thought, Sally. It's important to note that every Saturday at the Regional Water Authority, North Haven is part of a collaboration that offers our citizens the ability to take batteries, paint cans, insecticides, aerosol products that we can't really take in a miserable waste situation because when we, our miserable waste ends up going into landfills. So there is a free service where you can drive down. You can either do it online by appointment. You, you just Google the Regional Water Authority, hazardous waste, and you can bring down there, and it's so efficient. You stay in your car, and they then take the product out of your trunk or the hatch in your SUV.
Yeah, I've done it, and they really have, they have it down to a science.
Yes.
I think stuff like fluorescent lights, too.
Yes.
You know, some folks might have those in their basements or whatever. Yeah. Yeah, the information is out there, you just have to look for it.
Which is what we do even with the small batteries, we put them in a box and save them up till we can go to, you know, down to the regional center to drop them off along with all the other things. I think that's where the, I think they'll take the propane tank as well down there.
It would be listed, we have to check that, Sally, I think, to Bill's point, it would be listed on their website as to what they take, and it's a lot of different items to take.
Yeah, yeah, and it's there on Long Warf, it's usually in the, is it going on now? I know it starts in the spring.
It started, they delayed it, but it started recently and it goes through, I think, October.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, well, thank you for providing this.
All right.
It's actually in the first bullet, I think you mentioned, it goes, been from May through October.
Oh, here I am telling people to read, and I didn't read.
The very first bullet on the bottom of the page.
Yeah, that's on.
With the phone number.
Yeah. It's usually from, yeah, May through October, there it is. Okay.
All right. We have to get to item six because we have to establish the meeting dates for 2021. We always do that in July. So, as always, Bill and Sally, we're very flexible if you have something that comes up, but we would need to memorialize, at least for the record, these dates, which represent the first Thursday on every month.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting dates for the 2021 Board of Selectmen meetings, the meetings to be held on the first Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM in the upstairs conference room, number one, Memorial Town Hall, 18 Church Street, North Haven, Connecticut. And the meeting dates, do you need me to list them all, or I could just save those listed in the agenda?
In the agenda, right.
The 12 dates.
Yes.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to turn the rest of this meeting over to Bill and Sally to read, starting with item number seven, and who would like to start?
Thank you, Sally. Item number seven, to consider and vote upon a call for a public hearing concerning programs submitted for approval under the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act. Resolved that a, number eight, resolved that a public hearing will be held electronically on Tuesday, July 14, 2020, at 5:00 PM concerning programs to be submitted for approval under the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act. The town has received the following application, which is on file in the office of Michael J. Frida, First Selectman, Memorial Town Hall, 18 Church Street, North Haven, Connecticut, and available on the town's website at http://wttown.north-haven.canndicut.us, under public meetings, town hearings, I'm sorry, under public meetings, town hearing and meetings. Continuing education conservation improvements for Murray Arti Hall submitted by Landcraft, Fife and Drum Corps.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution as read, it's continuing energy conservation. I'll make a motion to, for the resolution as read.
All right. We have a motion, second?
I'll second.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Sally.
Yes, number nine, we are going to consider and vote upon the following resolution setting the time, setting time, setting the time of method and items to be considered and voted on at a special town meeting. I'll make a motion that we resolve that a special town meeting be held electronically on Tuesday, July 14, 2020, at 5:30 PM for the following purposes. A, to consider the approval of requested programs in accordance with the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act. A public hearing on these programs will be held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, July 14, 2020, preceding the special town meeting. B, to consider and vote upon town acceptance of the following roads associated with Pinehill Estates subdivision located at Beach Street and North Hill Road, Summer Lane, Conhurst Drive, Santora Drive, and Jersey Drive. And C, to consider and act upon a proposed property tax agreement between the town and CF North Haven LLC relative to the development of an electric generating facility on land located at 700 Middletown Avenue and 232 Rimmon Road. So I move that resolution, but I think we need to have some discussion, especially on item C.
Okay. So we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, end of discussion. Let me explain A, B, and C, and then we'll open my explanation open for discussion. So on item number A, this is something, ladies and gentlemen, the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act, that we're obligated to do every year, to provide for anyone who wants to make this application. And every year, it's the wonderful Land, Fife and Drum Corps that applies. So that explains, A, we've done it for years here on the Board of Selectmen. As far as B, this is very important, particularly for the residents to live on these streets, because in order for the town to provide the services, particularly plowing in the wintertime, the town is obligated to legally take acceptance of the roads. So this will be presented by our engineer that evening, and that's why this is on the agenda. We can't have, in this case, multiple roads that aren't town roads. Technically, we can't provide the services on those roads if we don't accept them. And although we haven't done this much down through the years, there's been a few, early on in the history of North Haven, you know, going back in the 80s, I think, this is when it really started to pick up. The town had to vote to accept these roads as official town roads. And before we open it up for discussion, item number C is a little bit more complicated. And let me explain that the Catholic cemeteries, in our case, the cemetery on Middletown Avenue, All Saints Cemetery, under the direction of the Archdiocese of Hartford, the Archbishop, the directive to the cemeteries has been to either divest or put out to lease, primarily put out to lease, land that the cemetery will never use that they own. So over there on Middletown Avenue, the Catholic cemeteries entered into an agreement with a solar contractor to put, I think it's a seven-megawatt solar park.
It's five.
In the northeastern part, down five, okay. So the way it works is, there's a long-term lease where the Archdiocese of Hartford and the cemetery, or cemeteries across Connecticut who do this, receive a standard lease every month, a form of revenue, an annuity, if you will, that the Catholic Archdiocese takes and accepts in return for leasing the land. On the town side, because it's taxable property, we have the ability to capture tax revenue from the infrastructure on the panels and on the equipment. And by town charter, this has to be presented to the town meeting and voted on by the town residents. So what this would be is an extra form of revenue incrementally for the town, and that's why that is on the agenda. Any questions?
Well, I have some written in the margins throughout the document here.
Okay.
And my first one was, who owns the property? So you've told me the Catholic, the Archdiocese owns it.
Yes.
Is it, it's just vacant land right now?
Yes, it's land that's vacant and determined by the Catholic cemeteries, not suitable for future, for future use.
Cemetery use.
Right.
So because it's owned by the church, it is, they're not paying taxes on it right now.
That's correct, yes.
So there's no taxes coming in.
Right.
And it's about forty, forty-one and a half acres.
Yes.
That's what it says here.
Yes.
The first whereas, okay. So that was my second question, because I didn't know who owned it, and now I know who, and my second question was, what are we collecting on taxes for land only, and it's zero?
Yes.
And so I was surprised, this sort of reminded me, it's different, but it reminded me of the tax incentive agreement we did with Amazon, you know, back, back a few years ago. And the owner of the property, Rhino, was a party to that. I was surprised that the owner of the property is not a party to this, but is that because they are tax exempted?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. So that's, you know, one of the questions that I had. But another question that I had is, in section two on page five, it talks about, you know, the tax payments and the effective date. The effective date is defined in the definition portion earlier in the agreement, but, you know, it's the first tax payment, semi-annual tax payment date immediately after they completed the project. So we don't know exactly when that's going to be yet, but, you know, it seems to be frozen at this amount. Am I at liberty to say the amount of tax per year? I mean, is this, okay. So it's frozen at this $53,070 per year. I was just wondering how that was determined, because that's, you know, this is a 25-year deal, and that, it never changes. So if the mill rate goes up, they're still paying semi-annually, according to the Schedule A, half of that $53,070, which is $26,535. I mean, it's got, you know, I feel bad for whoever typed this, they had to type that same number 50 times. So it's fixed for the 25 years. It seemed like a freeze to me.
So the way this has been positioned to us is that over the lifespan of 25 years, there are depreciation schedules every year as the equipment becomes devalued. They had determined over 25 years that they are presenting to us a predictable stream of revenue every year for the duration of this, this project. What they have presented to us is a dollar amount that takes out the vicissitudes of what the depreciation comes into play. So if we had gone the other way, or if they had gone the other way, we might have seen a higher amount in the first few years, but then it would drop off as the, as the equipment depreciates.
Right. Well, I noticed one of the, you know, I, when I wrote the question down, I thought I sort of knew the answer, because one of the whereas's on page two is to provide both the town and Green Skies a certain level of certainty and stability. So that's maybe what you're saying here.
That's what I'm saying, right.
And this is, this payment that we're going to be getting per year, this $53,070, is the only obligate, it's personal and real property tax. Well, there really aren't real property taxes because it's still owned by the church. So these really are.
Equipment, people.
Personal property.
Exactly.
And so, but of course, and they are, I mean, obviously, they're going to be making money, you know, generating this electricity. We don't get any of the electricity as a little.
Let me explain that.
Just wondering.
So here's what's happening with that, Bill, if I can explain this to Sally's question. So the, they're working collaboratively with the UI. As part of this project, they, meaning the contractor, are paying for a new grid system to augment the antiquated grid system that exists in the northeastern part of town in this area. So the UI is delighted with the fact that the contractor is paying the money to upgrade the system, because the new system, once upgraded, will be able to accommodate this power that's generated on this five-plus megawatt facility. So what does it mean? The only tangible thing that I can see is that a upgraded grid system, electrical grid system in the northeastern part of town, will be a preventive measure for power outages in that area that may have occurred through an antiquated grid system. So we will not derive any direct benefit other than new energy generated by this facility being fed into a new grid system. But it's difficult to determine what that means in terms of cost savings for our residents.
Right. But I, I mean, I certainly support, I know that you do to Mike and Bill, you know, solar, this is solar.
Solar.
So we like that. I just wondered if nothing will be, this is going to help the residents in that area, we hope.
Well, I think, yes, I think that the upgraded grid system will help, but it's difficult to determine what the energy savings will be.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So that's kind of where this is at, and we'll have it further explained at the town meeting.
And I did look at the Connecticut Siting Council, you know, because they had to file a petition with them, the Connecticut, it was petition 1342, I believe it was filed a couple of years ago, and it was approved rather quickly. You know, the Connecticut Siting Council was established in 1972 as an agency to balance the need for adequate.
Yes.
Public utility services at the lowest possible cost against the need to protect the environment and historic scenic recreational values. So I was glad to see, of course, that it, you know, they develop environmental standards for the location. And so that, it was approved by the Connecticut Siting Council, so obviously, we probably wouldn't be here if it.
Yeah, and actually, to that point, the Connecticut Siting Council has more authority and power than the governor on these types of issues. And this was a problem in the early stages, a lot of residents didn't want it. But I encouraged the cemetery and Green Skies to visit each house and talk to the residents directly. And in some cases, they put in large trees, they made offers to some of the residents, because you can imagine, well, imagine you look out your deck, let's say, and you see the solar park. So it was, it was a little problematic in the beginning, but, you know, that was over the last three years, I would say.
Yeah, yeah, it's, this has been, you know, on the burner for a while.
Yes.
Yeah.
And just to come back to Sally's point on this, is that this Connecticut Siting Council has so much authority, it supersedes local municipal zoning, planning and zoning regulations. It obviates the standard requirement for people to go before P and Z to get approval. They have so much power, the Connecticut Siting Council, they go, they go right by the planning and zoning by state statute, so.
Right, that was one of my initial questions, was P and Z involved in this?
No.
And they, they did not have to be, as I did my research with Connecticut Siting Council, they did not have to do that. So.
Yeah, along the same lines, I think, to go back to Sally's earlier point, Sally, and again, maybe you're not ready to note it, or maybe you were, but, you know, the, I saw the fix, it was fixed too, which seems a little bit odd, but section six does give the ability on page seven to adjust it. If, yeah, I think it's pegged off of five megawatts, and if it goes down, the number would go down. If five megawatts goes up, because maybe they put new panels in, we would get more, we would get an adjustment, a corresponding adjustment. If I read section, section six.
Subsection B particularly, yes.
Yep, you know, where maybe the panels become more efficient, and it's now 10 megawatt, you know, 10 megawatts of power, you know, we would maybe get a corresponding, the town would get, by we, the town would get a corresponding increase, I think, in terms of that fixed rate. So I think there is some flexibility that, you know, if it goes up or down, that the number would go up or down, so.
Yeah, right, and in 25 years, who knows? Right, and in twenty-five years, who knows what the technological changes that
Yes.
could, but I, I see the advantage, and I'm sure you like the, um, getting fifty-three thousand a year from property that
Yeah.
we weren't getting anything on, but the question is, you know, how did the folks living there feel about it? I'm, you know, I, uh, I didn't have an opportunity. Usually when I get stuff like this, I try to go to the place.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I, I know Middletown Avenue, I know the main entrance to the cemetery
Yeah.
there, and in the front, there's usually the strawberries. Is it near there, or is it, because Rimmen Road
So
and Middletown is, can you turn the picture where it is?
It's near where the strawberries used to be.
Right.
It is where the
It's near there, yeah. Just a little bit past.
She doesn't live too far.
Yeah, I know you live nearby, and, yeah.
So
A little bit past, but the strawberries aren't there anymore. But it's just slightly that area where the strawberries were, and it goes up to, backs up to Rimmen Road.
Right, exactly.
Right, and then there was Old Velvet kind of weaves in through there somewhere.
There's only one house on Old Velvet, but yes, Old Velvet does weave there, yes.
Yeah. Okay. No more strawberries, then?
I think maybe across the street at Christophero's.
Christophero, yeah, they're staying.
But I don't think you're picking your own anymore.
Okay, right, I can still get tomatoes over there at Christophero's, though.
Yes, you can, yes.
Phew. Well, then, I'll vote for it. No. I, you know, obviously, you know, when you put something like this in, in an area where folks live, uh, it's, it's an issue.
It wasn't
How do you feel about it? You
I've tried by it from time to time, and sometimes I don't even notice it, and other times it'll catch my eye, but it kind of, it's not terribly high, it's low, and it, I mean, I don't live exactly there, but
Oh, it's, it would be maybe five to six feet off of
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But I don't, never want to minimize, because I was very sensitive to the residents in the area, and I spoke with many of them, and although my hands were tied somewhat, because this is directed by the Archbishop, and as Sally mentioned, the Siting Council, we tried to encourage, and which they did, every single resident who had, who had an issue, they tried to go out and meet with those residents, so. Early on, Sally and Bill, it was a real problem.
Hmm.
Particularly on the Rimmen Road, Patton Road side, okay?
I'm not surprised.
For the folks who directly back up to it, you could understand.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
We fielded a lot of calls on that, Val, remember?
Yes, we did.
But, okay, so that's where we are, folks.
Okay.
So can I entertain a motion on this, or?
We have a motion in a second.
We have a motion, and a second, we did that, okay.
I think I seconded.
Yes.
I think we're ready to resume.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, Bill and Sally, I'll let you carry the rest.
Maybe, well, before we move on to the next one, the special town meeting that's going to be done electronically.
Right.
Correct.
Our town attorney's going to preside over that, right, Val?
That is correct.
Maybe you say how that will occur.
Val, I'll turn that over to you, you worked on that, so.
Sure. Jennifer is actually, uh, the town attorney helped me along with this, because it's, it's kind of new ground for us. We've never done an electronic town meeting, uh, so she helped along, and it will be through, using the Zoom method, and people will be allowed to speak, they can be recognized, and she will control, um, anyone who wishes to talk. So she'll be able to see, like, they can, like, raise their hand or signal that they want to speak, and then they can speak through their computer, or also through a phone line. If they don't have a computer, they can use a phone and dial in and be given the opportunity to talk. So they'll hear everything that, similar to what we were talking about tonight, about the tax agreement and the different issues, they'll be able to hear about it, and then also, they, a vote will be taken, and they will, they will vote online audibly, so.
Right.
It's, it's very different, but it has to be done, so.
Right. Uh, we, ahead, Bill.
I wanted to, I'm sorry, Sal, go ahead.
I, I just, so the, the charter provisions that require a moderator to be, you know, nominated and voted on, that's
No, we will, no, there will be a moderator. You still need to have the town clerk present electronically
Okay.
and then a moderator would need to be, um, appointed
Okay.
um, who will kind of just oversee, uh, the questions
Okay.
along with Jennifer kind of controlling the
Okay, when you said she was running the meeting, I thought
Well, I meant the actual electronic version.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's all right, I, you know, I, I try very hard to keep up with all of the executive orders, I thought maybe there was one I wasn't aware of where they were changing
No, I wish there was, but there wasn't.
Okay, well, I'm glad it's Zoom.
It is Zoom.
Let's not go there.
Zoom.
I was going to ask a similar question, actually, to Val.
Yeah, I think that's the mostly, well, that's the most widely accepted.
And again, we, we, we voted tonight, we resolved tonight to call the, the meeting, that's what our vote was, so.
Correct.
We'll, we'll hear from the folks.
Correct. And all of this information will be posted about how to access the town meeting
Yeah.
because, um, we, we are not required to publish it in the newspaper, but we, um, I may try to do that, but it will be published on the website, and so people are encouraged to go there. All the supporting documents will be there, and all of the instructions on how to access the town meeting will be on, and the public hearing as well, will be on the town's website.
Okay.
All right, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, Bill and Sally, feel free to carry on there.
I'll start, number eleven, we have appointments and resignations. I will move to the resignation of William C., I will move to accept, excuse me, the resignation of William C., excuse my mispronunciation, Collep?
Colehapp.
Colehapp, thank you. From the Quinnipiac Valley Health District Board of Directors.
Is there a second?
I don't think we should accept it, but I guess since he's moved out of town. He's a really nice, I mean, he was on the Board of Finance with, um
I think he's moved out of town.
And I guess we have to accept it since he's moved out of town.
Yeah.
Regrettably, I think, I'll accept it, or I'll second it, because Bill, uh, Bill has moved out of town. But he's a, I think he contributed not only to the Connecticut Valley Health District, but for the, the years that he was on the Board of Finance.
Mm-hmm.
A consummate gentleman who served so well, both on the Board of Finance and on this QVH Health District. Thank you, Bill, for your service. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next.
Next one is the appointment of Peter S. Sando, ten Deer Run Lane, from an alternate to a full seat on the Quinnipiac Valley Health District Board of Directors, to fill the unexpired term of William C. Colehapp, term to expire on June thirtieth, 2022.
I will second that appointment.
Okay, any other discussion? I'd like to thank Peter for willing, be willing to move up from an alternate, um, an outstanding individual, thank you, and we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I make a motion for the reappointment of James H. Ioviano, six hundred Washington Avenue, Unit F four, to the Blight Prevention Appeals Board, for a two-year term to expire June thirtieth, 2022.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second the reappointment of James.
All right, um, you know, as it relates to these next three, James, uh, and James and Kathy, this is not an easy board, and I, I am grateful for their service when you look at Blight, because it's a very emotional issue for a lot of people. So I thank each and every one of you, as we go through this, for your service. So we'll call for the vote on James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next.
Uh, next is the reappointment of James D. Mesdale, twenty-two Mansfield Road, to the Blight Prevention Appeals Board, for a two-year term to expire June thirtieth, 2022.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, James, for your service.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Kathy Fenata Grant, twenty-eight Sheffield Road, to the Blight Prevention Appeals Board, as an alternate for a two-year term to expire June thirtieth, 2022.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, thank you for your willingness to serve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is, I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Lynn Frederickson, ninety-five Pool Road, to the Cemetery Commission for a two-year term to expire on June thirtieth, 2022.
A second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Lynn does an outstanding job on this commission, and she's the chairperson also. We'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of James Redman, forty-seven Pool Road, to the Cemetery Commission, for a two-year term to expire on June thirtieth, 2022.
All right, is, is, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Jim, I want to thank you, and Jim comes to, he's been on this commission for a while, and he's got a great background in terms of cemetery maintenance, and we've always appreciated that. Jim, thank you for your willingness to serve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Jacqueline O'Neill, St. Peter, fifty-eight Juniper Drive, to the Quinnipiac Valley Health District Board of Directors, for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth
Oh, that's a typo.
Twenty, it should probably be twenty twenty-three, I would think.
Yes.
Instead of what's written here.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so the motion will include that amend, the two thousand twenty-three versus two thousand twenty.
We, we don't need to amend the agenda, we
No, it's just a typo.
Okay, it was a typo, so, fine, no problem.
And I, I believe it's the next one also.
Yeah, I'll, did I second that? I will second that.
All right. Jackie, thank you very much. Jackie's a longstanding North Haven resident who's expressed a desire to get more involved with boards and commissions, so we appreciate your intent to serve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Joseph M. Solomon, thirty-seven Jennifer Drive, to the Quinnipiac Valley Health District Board of Directors, for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, 2023.
Is there a second?
I'll second that reappointment.
All right. Joe, I'd like to thank you for your willingness to serve, and during this pandemic, this Quinnipiac Health District becomes more important as a resource for our town, so I appreciate Jackie and Joe, their willingness to serve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll motion to, for the reappointment of Edward J. Swankowski, Director of Community Services and Recreation, as the town's co-municipal agent, to provide information to the elderly for a four-year term to expire June thirtieth, 2024.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Judy, thank you for everything you do for the town in North Haven.
That's Edward.
I'm sorry, Edward, okay.
He does a little.
Edward, thank you, we work, we work with that every day, so. Now, you have to tell that I called him Susan, or, I called him Judy, okay?
You called him Judy, and you said he did a little bit, okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will make the, uh, motion for the reappointment of Judy Ammarone, Senior Center Director, as the town's co-municipal agent, to provide information to the elderly for a four-year term to expire June thirtieth, 2024.
I'll second that reappointment.
Uh, Judy, you do a great job for us as senior services director, it's our pleasure to appoint you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next.
Number twelve, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the shortlist of property tax refunds listed in the agenda.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item thirteen.
Okay, um, the number of bond releases, uh, the first one, um, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, number P eighteen thirty-two seventy Blue Hills Road, amount of original bond, two thousand five hundred dollars, release, um, to, uh, release the entire bond balance in the amount of twenty, two thousand five hundred dollars, with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, yes, Sally?
So sorry?
Okay. We're at item number fourteen, the next
No, we have three more, we got to do them individually.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve bond release, P, uh, bond release for the matter known as P oh six dash twenty-five, Summer Wind Holdings LLC, eight twenty-eight Thompson Street, amount of original bond, two hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars, release a portion of the bond in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars, with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, next.
Uh, next is, uh, number P zero eight fifteen, fifty-one Middletown Avenue, um, motion to, um, regarding the, um, amount of the original bond being four thousand dollars, um, and to release the entire bond balance in the amount of four thousand dollars, with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And finally, we have, I think that's I eighteen dash thirteen, seventy Blue Hills Road, the amount of the original bond was twenty-five hundred, I'll make a motion to release the entire bond balance in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars, with the recommendation of the Inland Wetlands Commission.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?